We'll call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education to order at 7:01. Julie, do you want to take attendance? And verify that we have a forum.
Yes. Joe Abdella. John Bonayudo. Greg Kaba. Stephanie. Angela. Alex. Justin. Jen. Jane. Julie's here. Pete.
Pete.
Pete. And Mary. Everyone's here.
Okay, we have 12, uh, 12 members here. Okay. Excellent. Well, we're going to move on to the first item on the agenda, which is one of the important things we do to recognize students. Uh, and, uh, I'm going to turn that over to, uh, Dr. Goslin.
Test. You good? All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight. While I would certainly, um, love to believe that you're all here to take in the school board meeting, I'm sure that, um, you're really here for our student awards event this evening. Um, tonight we're giving out three student awards. Um, some of our students have already been, um, invited to a wonderful dinner that we had two weeks back, um, honoring them, um, across all the superintendents, uh, and all the schools in the county. Uh, so we'll be giving out the superintendent student award for those students, from our district that won that award for, um, the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association. Um, and then we'll also be giving out awards tonight for student leadership, um, awards from, um, students from the Chapag Valley School, and also our top five academic seniors from the, uh, Chapag Valley School. And so we, um, we thank you for coming out tonight. What we'll do is I'll invite the principals up. They'll give out the awards, present a bio, um, for some of our award recipients. We'll give our students their awards and then, um, take a moment for families to come up and take a picture, um, of their students as they, um, stand proudly with their, their awards. And so, um, at this time, I'm going to invite our elementary principals, um, to come up and give out their student superintendent awards. And then we'll invite Mr. Cross to give out the awards, um, on behalf of Chapag Valley School. So at this time, um, Mrs. Judd and, um, Mrs. Rue, if you would come up, um, we can start our awards.
Hello, I am the principal of Booth Free in Burnham School. Uh, just for those of you who do not know me, I'm Dr. Rue, and I'm very excited to share our recipients for the reward. First, I'll start with Booth Free School. Tao Meart was our recipient for the superintendent's award. He consistently perseveres, one percented with challenging tasks, a true mathematician. Tao has regularly scored at the top of his class in both mathematics and science. Tao is also very much well-liked by his peers and is known for being funny, kind, and an advocate for including everyone. In his free time, he likes to play baseball, ski, and play video games. He lives with his mom, dad, older brother, two cats and a hamster, and he speaks so highly about his family that we know that they are just such an important part of his life, and he makes that known to everyone in school. So congratulations, Tao. Tao, would you like to come up to receive your award? And then for Burnham School, we have Maddie Tuchlowski. She is an exceptional student at Burnham School. Maddie demonstrates kindness and empathy in everything she does. She actually has made it her mission to spread awareness about emotional intelligence and just kindness, which was evident in her invention convention project. Maddie has been an inspirational student that has taken on not only leadership roles within student council, but has also taken the lead in coordinating many collaborative events for her peers. This includes, but is not limited to, a talent show and a collaborative sports tournament. Maddie planned, organized, and implemented both of these events, which she also provided ribbons and trophies for. Really, in the end, Maddie's positive attitude combined with her qualities has fostered a positive school climate. All the while, she remains a diligent and conscientious student who values her family, friends, and community. We commend Maddie for her grit and positive mindset. She's a true example of a Burnham student.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to recognize Mike Rivera, fifth grade student at Washington Primary School. Um, it's been a privilege working with Mike. He has grown considerably over the years. He's become such a kind and generous student. Uh, Mike has a generous heart, which makes him an excellent friend and role model for younger students. Mike tutors a first grader several days a week. He is always happy to share his knowledge and is incredibly responsible with his tutoring schedule. Mike enjoys music and being a member of our school chorus. Academically, Mike applies effort and perseverance when challenges arise. Additionally, Mike is a very active member in his church and volunteers his time as well. So I'd like to congratulate Mike. He's not here this evening. Uh, maybe he will join us a little bit later, and if he does, we'll get a good picture of him. If not, maybe we can offer another time for him to come back. So congratulations to Mike.
Okay, and at this time, I will welcome Mr. Croft up to the podium to announce the superintendent award winners from, um, Chapag Valley School.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all. The first thing I want to make sure that I do is communicate Dr. Shell's regret that he can't be here with us tonight. He is at his graduation, from Fordham University for his, uh, education, doctorate in education. So he's got a good reason to miss us, but he's, he's not happy about it. Okay. But I kind of got in trouble because I told his wife that his, his mom said he had to go, and that was news to his wife. So anyways. Here we go. Jane Light is an eighth grade student at Chapag Valley School. I didn't see Jane yet, but maybe I just missed her. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that, but we'll, we'll be able to celebrate Jane. Anyways, she's worth it. Uh, Jane, throughout her time at Chapag as a middle school student, has served as a quiet but very strong leader in her class. She is kind to everyone and helpful to everyone. She's active in her community through our local 4H chapter and, uh, working with Little Britches, which many of you know, but some of you may not know that it's a therapeutic writing organization, equestrian organization. Jane is conscientious and really she is a, a role model for everyone and embodies Chapag's core values. So please join me in thanking and congratulating Jane in absentia. Cameron Gertner is here, and he is an 11th grade, uh, student at Chapag. He is an integral part of our agri-science program, and he has his eye on studying environmental science in college, uh, environmental studies. Cameron, can you confirm that that remains true? Since this was, great, okay, perfect. If it's not, that's okay. You're, you're able, you're allowed to change your mind lots of times. Uh, Cam is a three-sport athlete who stands out for his hard work and commitment to all of his, uh, activities in and outside of school, but including the soccer, hockey, and tennis teams. Not to mention, Cam is one of the best dressed students at the school, which he did not, he did not disappoint us here today. His enthusiasm for his school community is evident in everything he does. He brings a positive attitude with him everywhere, everywhere he goes, and it affects all of us. So thank you and congratulations, Cam. Nicholas Sibbet is a senior at Chapag. He is a dedicated student and an active member of our school community. Nick has demonstrated tremendous school spirit and commitment as a member of the track and field and cross-country teams. In addition to being a student athlete, he's also a member of our school choir and has participated in many, in many performances, including two at Radio City Music Hall. Nick's contagious positivity and conscientious nature make him an invaluable member of our school community. I've also been very impressed by Nick's, uh, senior project, which I look forward to tracking. I look forward to tracking your presentation, Nick. It's been a, a terrific thing and has helped me, uh, get some great gifts for my nephews while I know you've been raising money for some outstanding organizations. So congratulations and thank you for all you do for our school, Nick. I'm, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that I'm on the right track with our next set of awards, which are also, uh, highlighting Chapag students. This is the, uh, CAVE Student Leadership Award Program. Do I have that right, Dr. Goslin? Okay, great. I saw Jack here. Jack, there's Jack. Okay. Well, it's not very often that you sit with a student who is, who has an exceptionally clear vision of where, uh, they are and where they want to go in life. And Jack is one of those people, it seems to me. I don't know if you feel that way, Jack, but it, it, it is, it is the way that, uh, the, the way that you see him, and that's a good thing. Uh, Jack is hardworking, caring, driven, and laser-focused. He's a shining star in our theater department, has a level of maturity and professionalism that is not often seen in one his age. Over the last four years, he has developed the ability to lead in a kind, caring, and collaborative way that makes everyone around him feel valued. I believe that's true. He will surely leave an indelible mark on our school. Jack will be heading to the University of Michigan in the fall to pursue a career in film. His life goal is to, is to design works. Tell us if this remains true, okay, Jack? To design works and create characters that inspire people to follow their dreams and chase down what they feel is their purpose in life. Thumbs up to that, Jack? Okay, great. That's beautiful. Uh, there's no doubt that you will accomplish that and more. Congratulations, Jack. Juliana Fontanilla is intelligent, witty, eloquent. She excels at everything she chooses to tackle. I think that's true, Juliana. I don't know if that's your total life experience, but that's certainly how it seems. Uh, but she will also be the first to tell you that being smart is not the most important thing. Using your gifts to help others is paramount to a fulfilling life. At Chapag, Juliana has sought and found opportunities to share her intellect and her passions with others. She helps to teach our SAT prep class. She's an officer in our mathletes club and a founding member and driving force in our mathletes club and a tutor for younger students. More importantly, is, more important is her willingness to support and collaborate with classmates. Her sunny disposition's also pretty important and really affects our school in a great way. And they make her an integral and unique member of our school community. Juliana has a rare combination of intelligence and creativity and awareness, uh, and principles, self-awareness and awareness of others. I have no doubt that these qualities, along with her dedication to excellence overall, will lead to an interesting and accomplished and fun and happy life. Juliana has accepted a seat in the pharmacy program at the University of Oklahoma for the fall. Congratulations, Juliana. I don't know if, Tallulah, I didn't see it. Okay. Tallulah Shafini is an eighth grade student at Chapag Valley School. She's hardworking. She advocates for herself and others. She's, she strives to do well and steps up as a class leader and a peer helper. Tallulah is reliable and willing to go above and beyond as a member of our community. And, uh, another thread that occurs to me is that Tallulah and our other eighth grade awardee seem to me to add a lot of fun to our school. So Tallulah, we appreciate that. You seem to make people smile everywhere you go, and that is worth anything, really. So congratulations and thanks to Tallulah for everything you do for our community. This, this next student, uh, pulls on that thread that I tried to weave. Uh, Joseph Fontanilla is an eighth grade student, and he's an all-around wonderful student and student leader. He goes above and beyond in his schoolwork. He's a quiet but effective, it seems to me, leader in our school community. He's always willing to help others. He strives for excellence in everything that he does, facing challenges head-on and without fear. And he shows commitment to a task and motivates those around him. I, that, that is true, and, and he adds a lot of fun also to our school, and that's noted and appreciated. Uh, where's Joseph? There he is. Come on up, please, Joseph. Thank you and congratulations. Just give me just a moment so that I can be sure that I'm situated and I have all, all of my facts. Right? Okay. This next, uh, set of students whom we're going to recognize are recognized through a different sort of process, really. Um, I think that all of the other students that we have recognized so far tonight have been selected by acclamation, uh, from their school community, from their teachers, from staff members, from their school administrators. And, uh, these students, uh, could easily be selected in that same sort of way, but they were in fact selected in a different way. The students we're going to recognize now are the students with the highest level of academic achievement in the class of 2023 here at Chapag Valley School. So this is a cumulative four-year effort. Uh, that's, word is probably insufficient to describe the work that they have applied to their studies, to their academic endeavors. Uh, and it seems that this reflects ability, it reflects determination, it reflects grit, it reflects passion and curiosity. And I'm very pleased to be able to recognize these students for all of those things and, uh, we're setting a high bar here at our school for all of us to try to reach. Uh, these students are going to be recognized. Now I'm getting nervous here about my alphabet. They're going to be recognized in alphabetical order. Okay, so I'm going to double check here. The alphabet. Yeah, I think I nailed it. Okay. Okay. Grace Kootu, friendly and empathetic nature has allowed her to make many long-lasting connections here at Chapag. Her infectious enthusiasm for learning and her, and for her school community has made her an invaluable addition to numerous student organizations, but most especially our drama department. From Mrs. Mushnick in Little Shop of Horrors. Or lost Little Shop of Horrors, but you did it. Hey, up, that's right. That was to be performed March 14th, 2020. Super sky point for Little Shop of Horrors. Uh, from, from Mrs. Mushnick to The Good Witch. Uh, Glinda the Good Witch in The Wizard of Oz. Grace found a place where collaborating, caring, supporting, and creating could result in a magical experience that not only changed her perspective on life, but gave so much enjoyment to the entire community. Grace is excited to pursue elementary education. Cheers to you in the fall at Manhattan College. And she will have the opportunity and she will take the opportunity, I'm sure, to mold and nurture the next generation of students. Grace, come on, please. Mary Catherine Eddy is an exemplary student, athlete, and more, whose tremendous personal standard of excellence has culminated in becoming the Chapag Class of 2023 valedictorian. Whether in the classroom or on the tennis court, Mary Catherine's level of focus, drive, and passion to excel have propelled her to put forth her very best all weight. Over the past four years, Mary Catherine has excelled in our most challenging courses. She is a three-season athlete and has participated in the Model United Nations Conference annually. As Mary Catherine goes on to continue her education, she will undoubtedly continue to pursue every opportunity to excel as she has done here at Chapag. Congratulations, Mary Catherine. Morgan here? Morgan, you represent a milestone. Is that okay with you? Okay, good. Morgan Ferrison is a quiet leader who serves as a model student to her peers. Her teachers have described her as a, as sophisticated and thoughtful in her worldview. That's a big deal. That's very, very terrific description. Uh, and a student with exceptional character. As a member of the first graduating class to spend four years in our agri-science academy, that's the milestone. Morgan has stood out in her ability to connect with our school community. As a junior, she was elected president of our FFA, of our FFA chapter, as well as being inducted to the National Honor Society and the Math Honor Society. In the fall, Morgan is excited to continue her educational pursuits at Fordham University where Mr. Shell's is right now. Juliana Fontanilla is smart, empathetic, and helpful. She has pursued and achieved academic excellence, including becoming the Class of 2023 salutatorian. Not by chasing grades, but by chasing learning, following her curiosity, seeking to help people, and becoming, and being vulnerable, operating outside of her comfort zone. She seems to know who she is, and that security in herself seems to help her drive forward toward her ambitions. One more thing, she also often has wonderfully painted nails. Juliana? No? Not tonight? Okay, sorry. Maria Stratner, our second milestone. Where's Maria? Also a milestone, terrific, also a member of our, our agri-science academy. Has always been passionate about ideas and has an empathetic understanding of the human condition. She thrives on a challenge and is an engaged student who has a high respect for the world of ideas. Maria is a member of the National Honor Society and the Model United Nations Club. As an agri-science student, she has found ways to give back to the community through her work at a local animal rescue. Her talents also extend beyond the classroom to the stage where she gave an incredible, uh, performance as the lead in The Wizard of Oz. And now I'm going to be singing that for the rest of the night after thinking about that. Terrific. You are so great. Maria's presence in everything that she does elevates those around her. Next year, Maria will become a Husky at the University of Connecticut studying more.
Okay, at this time, what we'll do is we'll allow the, um, awardees and their families to, um, to head out if they'd like to before we start the, the board meeting for this evening. Uh, so we'll take a few moments to allow that. Uh, those who like to stay are more than welcome to stay, uh, and then we'll proceed with the rest of our school board meeting.
We haven't got a chance to say hi? Next item on the agenda is public consent on agenda items. Any member of the public have any comments to make on matters that are on the agenda? Going once, going twice? Three times? I see none. We'll move on. On the consent agenda, we have annual district budget meeting of May 1, 2023, and the Board of Education meeting of May 1, 2023. Does anyone have any desire to take either of those off of the consent agenda to go over them or to make changes? Hearing none, those minutes are adopted. Year in review. Burnham and Booth Free Schools. Emily. Well, if she doesn't know what school she's the principal of, we're, we're in trouble. But if they're going to tag team, we'll have both Emilys.
So thank you for having Emily and I here today. We're so excited to share all the wonderful experiences that our students have had over the past few months. I know we are set as being separate on the agenda, however, we like each other so much. We decided to highlight some common experiences and celebrations among all the elements. We decided to highlight some common experiences and celebrations among all the elementary schools.
Okay, so um we chose a theme for tonight um to kind of highlight all the things that we'd like to share with you, and the theme is students as leaders of learning. Um, so creating classroom environments where teachers and students partner in the learning process with a united focus for the elementary schools. Explicitly teaching students the skills to be leaders of their own learning is foundational to this partnership. Students who are leaders of their own learning are self motivated. They want to learn and they are engaged. Learners who are curious, ask questions, listen to others, share ideas, and work through learning tasks both independently and collaboratively are more likely to learn at higher levels. So tonight, we're going to share how the elementary teachers are supporting students as facilitators of their own learning and also of the learning of others.
So as some of you are aware, over the past two years, the elementary teachers have been participating in professional development through the Institute of Learning at the University of Pittsburgh. This professional development highlighted a teaching and learning strategy to increase talk in the classroom. This talk is just not any kind of talk. It's talk that actively engages students in purposeful discussion about the learning problem and content. This kind of talk is referred to as accountable talk. And I've known I've heard it mentioned multiple board meetings, so I know this is nothing new. It can be seen as whole group or small group structures. It is talked as accountable to the learning community where students are expected to listen, but just not listen. They listen actively, elaborate, and build on others' ideas and work to clarify, justify, and expand knowledge. It is talked as accountable to knowledge where students are called to be specific about the learning, the vocabulary, and provide evidence to stack up logic or conclusions. It is also talk that is rigorous and prompts students to synthesize sources of information, construct explanations, and ask questions to test understandings.
So the first charge teachers have in terms of creating accountable talk for students is to establish the expectations for responsible and respectful talk within their classrooms. Teachers and students co-create classroom norms and set up routines for supporting accountable talk skills and behaviors. So on the next slide, there are two examples of accountable talk. How to take turns, use kind words, let all the brains think together and ask helping questions. In contrast, you see a third grade accountable talk guideline. And this is um a little bit more explicit, things like everyone gets a chance to share, figure out who speaks first, next, and so on. Um, you might have something about ask questions and add on to each other's thinking. Um, show respect by staying focused on the conversation. Um, use the text or math reasoning to back up your thinking. And so those were co-created with the teacher. And then there are some examples of pictures there where students are engaged in learning activities that promote productive accountable talk.
And this is probably one of my favorite things. I know when we did some um walkthroughs, you see this happening in the classrooms, but I just love that you can even see some of these talk moves that students use happening in even the kindergarten classroom. So in addition to creating climate that supports productive talk, teachers and students engage in a variety of talk moves that result in deeper discussions between teachers and students and student to student. Pressing for accuracy, reasoning, and expanding reasoning closely aligns with higher cognitive levels of thinking and demands revisiting information multiple times to create meaning. So what I love about this and what we've noticed over the past two years, sometimes when a student would make a statement like, I believe this, it ends and students might nod and that's that. Now it's moving further and deeper into that conversation, not saying that anyone's wrong, as long as you have some evidence to support your thinking. So students are using phrases like, do you agree with what Joey just said? I would like to hear what Suzie has to say. And then it just goes into, where can I find that? What evidence supports that? And can you take that thought a little further? What would you say now about that? And then really then connecting it to the learning. How does this add to our understanding and how does this connect with maybe a subject matter you're talking about or something happening in the real world? Okay, next slide, please. Here are a few pictures of our students showing our students engage in productive discussions. To expand this professional development experience, teachers at each building participated in colleague learning walks where they visit each other's classroom to gather data on the implementation of accountable talk and to learn from one another. So in these pictures, you'll notice that's mainly student driven. Teachers are walking around facilitating the discussion, but really the students are engaged together in conversation. But what we found as um an admin team is that's great when we walk around and do walkthroughs, but how about colleagues within their schools? Your neighbor, you're the teacher next door and to look in to see what you the great things you're doing in your classroom and some maybe takeaways or questions that they may have. So then if you don't mind playing that video, there's two colleagues who are discussing what the colleague walk looked like.
Throughout the IFL training, um I've learned many, many different things, and I think the biggest takeaway for me was um establishing the student centered routines and um accountable talk. Um, some of the routines that I've incorporated, um, you know, with fidelity into my classroom are the quick rice, the charting, um, the pair sharing. Having the IFL training um kind of reminded me of that um that social interaction, but not just sharing of ideas, but more of a um, a learning environment where students are speaking in a way that's helping themselves learn, broadening their mind. Um, and IFL is is really what um gave me as a teacher the the foundation, the skills, um, you know, necessary to put all that back into practice um and more, so. So after we did the IFL training at Washington Primary School, we had the opportunity to participate in learning walks where teachers traveled to other classrooms and observed instructional routines put into place based on our IFL training. So we saw student talk moves, we saw teacher questioning. And of course, it was a little nerve wracking to have a group of people come observe your professional practice. But at the end of the day, it was very rewarding because we were able to notice similarities across grade levels. We were able to see new ideas that maybe we could do something in a new and creative way, or it affirmed the choices that we were making, that this was something that we're doing in kindergarten that would eventually help them when they got to fifth grade. And once the learning walks were complete, we came together at a faculty meeting and just looked at the informal data and found that there's a lot to celebrate. We took all of this professional learning, put it into practice in our classrooms, and our students are benefiting from that learning, which was very rewarding and teachers um shared some really wonderful things about each other, that students seem happy in classrooms, that there's positive energy, that um we have a school environment where it's okay to make mistakes while you're learning. And we can see how the ideas that we learned in IFL progress from one grade level to the next. Um, and another thing that was said was that we're taking what we're learning and trying to implement it together. So it was unifying as a staff and a generally rewarding experience for me as a professional.
So that's um an example of how we put into practice some training that really encouraged students to be partners in a learning experience with teachers and to really become deeper thinkers about the kinds of materials that is presented to them. So the next highlight we wanted to share with you where students um are also leaders of their own learning is in the area of science. So students can apply the accountable talk moves to other disciplines, especially in science. Science offers students many opportunities to be leaders of their own learning as they work in teams to answer high interest questions related to real life examples in both life, physical, and earth sciences. Students engage in lessons routine that promotes engagement, exploration, expl- explanation, elaboration, and evaluation. So there's a really key um areas where we include in all of our science lessons. For example, engage would be seeing a phenomenon and asking questions and making claims uh to elaborate, applying their understanding in new ways, and of course, to evaluate defend positions. So we're going to share with you another short video. This video just highlights all the different kinds of science um activities that our students engaged um with over the course of the year. Um, so we hope you enjoy that.
My my favorite thing about science was making paintbrushes. The way they function was cool.
The thing I liked about science this year was I made an earth out of Play-Doh. I took five colors of Play-Doh and I made them all around a red piece of Play-Doh. So each color represented earth layers.
I've made this bird feeder here and I'm I was learning about Cardinals and blue jays. So how it works, probably peck at the cup and then the seeds will come out of the cup, fall onto the tray, so it's easy for the birds to get.
One thing I liked that we did building the pulley was that we had to use a little bit of mechanical energy and it was very hard. Um, a fun thing about this was that we learned how to use all of our energies in different ways.
Favorite thing from science this year is probably learning about ecosystems. And there was also a little bit of math mixed with most of the science, which made it super fun.
We talked about habitats and things that live in habitats. The Arctic fox is really cool because it changes uh or changes color because when the snow melts, it it changes color to like the brownish gray, just blends in with the rocks.
I learned about finches and they make seeds and they sit on pegs. They can sit on this and then they can hang this up on tree on branches.
We learned about um like fluids and like gas. And we made a core to see like if popsicle, like we would build one and then we would see if the popsicle will melt.
And my favorite thing about science is learning new things about the world. Like my favorite project was when we made a finger of a moving tendon.
There was this purple liquid which we mixed with different um things like borax, baking soda. We wanted to see an experiment of did it react or did it not react? And we mixed all of them and it began to like splatter.
In science, we try to answer what we are curious about. We noticed like here, we noticed I noticed that there's different different sized rocks and then we wonder, I wonder how the rocks got there. We would do like a science project to try to figure it out.
The backside cute kits are kind of like robotic programming, but like with little pieces. And you use a controller, connect to this, and it does certain things depending on the way you program them.
So basically what we did is we hooked the string up to the pulley that we attached right here on the bike. For this get pedal, it will pull this up, but if you put it in reverse, then it will go back down.
Of the V box. I learned that if you press forward, side, side, and back, it might not go the way you're expecting it to. Part of science was to make piggy houses and the wolf would blow the piggy houses away.
So those two pieces, accountable talk and how students use accountable talk and their collaborative skills in science were two highlights that we thought were really important to share with you tonight, but we also have some celebration. So I know this might look a little different than how it looks at Chappagh, but we would like to share some celebrations of learning that we just want to highlight the work our students and staff and families have been doing to enrich the academic and social learning at the elementary level. So first off, we have our invention convention. We had forty two students or inventors part of the invention convention across the three elementary schools. And not only was it amazing to see how thoughtful and creative our students are, but it's also a wonderful opportunity to bring in some community members. We had first selectmen come. We had our superintendent come. So it was just a really nice opportunity for students to showcase their work and for us to just have community members and families be part of the experience. Then this is our first year of having a personalized education program, which our students loved to call PEP. And this was to support student interests and skills. It was an after school program that was implemented and open to um all students in third through fifth grade. And all the students from Washington, Burnham, and Booth came together to one location after school, which was just a great opportunity for us all to connect and come together. But topics included technology, visual arts, animation. Um, we had some feedback from the students and they loved it and they would like to see it continue moving into next year. All three elementary schools also took part in Unity Day, and this happened in October. And Unity Day represents a collective effort to unite for kindness, but also courage and inclusion. Students and staff wore orange in an effort to unite. There was also many learning opportunities and assemblies for our students to take part in. And several activities were included throughout the day. For example, students create a unit unity chain that was created as a promise of action and to include everyone. Now, this was one of our most impressive events. We had a kids heart challenge for the American Heart Association, which was um led by our PE teacher, Mr. Morgan. Students participate in this challenge during PE class. Students learned about the heart muscle and all the different exercises to improve heart health. But our schools earned nearly ten thousand dollars between the three of them and celebrated with a whole school celebration, all three elementary schools, which the celebration was filled with different aerobic activities, including jump roping and even maybe a pie in the face and some silly slime and the and admins faces. So the students definitely enjoyed that activity. Um, also, we tried to promote with our students uh different types of service learning activities where they are reaching out to the community in multiple ways. So this year, um, we did food drives in all of our schools. Um, we also participated in PJ for Kids. Um, so this is just a couple of examples how we give back to the community. At each of our schools, we also are really promoting gardening and composting. Um, it's an opportunity for our students to have a sense of community together, a commitment and responsibility while teaching sustainability. So you have some pictures here of um they're clearing out the beds. Um, they're doing some uh uh they'll look at some hydroponic. Uh, they're planting seeds for the new gardens for this year and they're learning about um the life cycle of plants. We also this year really tried hard to connect with Chappagh um and have them be partners in a lot of experiences that we um could do at the elementary level. So we did really increase that connection. Our students visited the planetarium. Um, and they also visited the animals as well as um did things like learning about the maple syrup uh process. Um, so we had um students come and visit uh all of our schools for multiple reasons. Uh, primarily gardening was a one of the key things for our school, and I know composting were some senior projects that would happen in the other school. So we're really happy about that. The um high school kids just absolutely love coming down and they're great teachers. Um, the young students just really appreciate um their their kindness and their care and also the knowledge that they impart. So we hope to grow that a little bit more as um we go on to our next year. Um, lastly, we wanted to share the many ways that um we celebrated the environment. Each school included a variety of activities that helps students learn how to respect the environment and to that helps students learn how to respect the environment and to protect and conserve, uh, resources. So here are just some pictures of great little activities that students did to, um, sort of explore the environment. We have them just learning about how water, if it's polluted, can, you know, get into our food source and that's using celery stick, which is our younger students. We had, um, water filtration. You know, we had some experiences with, um, looking at, uh, oil spill over there and I want to share the other ones that. We also had students bring in materials that were going into the garbage at home or even being recycled at home. And our students then had, um, a whole school maker space opportunity to create something out of the recycled materials. And then we also had an earth dome come in where students learned about the planet and the effects of, um, our impact on the environment and what we can do to just be active participants and making sure we are doing the best to care for our earth. And then they even got to go inside and see from internally in the globe. Um, so they had a lot of fun with Earth Week. So that kind of concludes some of our highlights tonight. Uh, if you have any questions or comments for us?
I just have an observation from the photos. It's really great to see the kids together, almost touching, uh, you know, the three foot walls definitely went out the window. So it's, that's perfect. Very nice.
Thank you for sharing.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I wanted to, I, I just love the science portion of that. The invention convention, I always liked that. Sometimes my kids like it. But, uh, I really liked the part where you, the Chapag students and our elementary students work together. But that'll work a lot and that will help a lot. And the fact that they'll come and they'll work with the team, that's so cool. I like it a lot. And we have a, a sustainability committee for the town of Washington that covered the other student too. And I will share with them that you, that you've done that. So I like that a lot.
Thank you for sharing.
I, excuse me. I really enjoyed, um, the signs on the riverwalk down at the, uh, in the depot as I was walking my dogs there. Very cool to see all the learning that was saving place.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that feedback.
I want to say thanks for your presentation. This was really lovely. I like the collaboration and I recognize so many of these programs. My daughter participated in the PEP, she's done invention convention, um, enrichment program, uh, all of it. It's just, it's so nice and it is great to see everyone together. But is there a way that parents can view your presentation? Are we going to post that somewhere? Cause I think it's just so well done and I like seeing it in the PowerPoint with the videos and, you know, something to the kids. I know your parents would love to see them talking about science programs. Yeah, thank you. Well done. It was a really great presentation. I love, you know, again, I've said it a few times tonight. This is my favorite night of the year. I love to see the culmination of what has happened this year versus previous years. Um, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, the PEP program, um, what's the frequency of that? Is that like once a month, once a week or is it okay?
It's our initial year, starting it and we wanted to start off right and not go too big at first. But really the response was amazing. I'm not sure if anyone saw the pet video that I believe was, um, posted last week or the week before that Mr. Hosking had made. And you could actually see the animation come to life that our students made. So some of those still pictures, the students actually recorded and make little videos out of it. So really it's for our students that have these interests in these areas that they might not have to show all the time and just really get to focus in. And we had Jane Manley, our art teacher and Mr. Hosking, um, booth three second grade teacher who really helped facilitate this. It went from the end of the school day till five o'clock and the students could have kept going. They loved it. So, this is definitely something we're going to look at doing next year and maybe with more frequency. And that I just want to give a shout out to the bus company, um, because they actually provided us a bus to transport the students from Burnham School to Booth's Free School and from Washington over to Booth's Free School. So it made it happen. So I really want to give them a shout out. Yeah, free of charge too.
Okay. Just ask where everybody.
I, I will send it, um, to make sure that, I know Ben has about resented just when he's got lost and people stand.
Well, thank you, everyone. We appreciate.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to item F, Year in Review, Ben Allen. Ben, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on to reports and recognition. It's been an interesting year. Uh, I think we saw tonight the culmination of it and some of the, some of the great students that, uh, were winning awards here. Uh, I'd like to point out that there were two agri-science students in the top five, um, uh, students in the school. I think that's a tribute to the program, to the, to the quality of the students that we, uh, have and and the wonderful kids who have come here and added so much to our, our school. I think that's, uh, I think that's a wonderful thing. Um, I think I'm going to probably, um, conclude with that because I'm, uh, still, still a little bit, uh, exhausted from the long run of my show, which finally closed on Sun, on Saturday night. So, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk to you about other things.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, before I share my report, I just want to, um, allow our principals and, um, and Teresa to, to head out if you need to. I know that you guys have, um, work in the morning bright and early. So, um, you can certainly head home. Be safe. Again, um, as I said in my report, I just want to again thank our entire school board. I think when you look at these videos, um, what it really puts into sharp relief for us, um, and into real visual representations for us is all of the, the work that you do, right? So it's more than just voting on policies or hammering, oh, you know, line items in the budget. Uh, this is what all of that comes together to produce. And so, you know, thank you for your hours of hard work and all of your feedback and insight because when you see the finished product, it's hard to argue with, you know, all of the things that we do that make Chapag and, uh, Region 12 great. So thank you for all that you do. Um, I know it goes off and unthanked and, and school boards, um, you know, for those who don't know, uh, there's, there's no compensation. This is all volunteer work. Um, and so, yeah, surprise Jen, sorry. Um, yeah, the, the, the check is in the mail. It'll come someday. Um, but yeah, when we don't get the check, we definitely get the dividends of all the, the work that we do. So thank you to all of you. Um, I want to try to keep it, um, quick tonight because I know that we had a lot of, um, other presentations this evening. Um, and we will be having a year in review for, um, the secondary level, uh, next week. I asked our folks to break into separate sessions, um, so that we could give a little bit more time and energy and focus to each. And, um, so we're going to do the, uh, and it actually worked out well because, um, as we said earlier, Dr. Shels is, um, out of town getting his doctorate today at Fordham. So, um, that'll work perfect. So they'll join us at our next meeting. Um, some of the big news, we're on the district, we have our smarter balance testing going on. Um, and we've been doing uh, math and ELA testing as well as science testing, um, for grades three through eight. And our students are doing a great job. Um, and then we ask again that, um, you send your kids to school so that they're here, they're not going to do makeup sessions as much as we can avoid. Um, that they get, gonna sleep and they're eating healthy food to prepare for those tests. But, um, the kids are doing great. Uh, they're taking their time. You talk to them, they're saying that the tests aren't too bad. Um, and so we don't want to stress them out and, um, we don't want to have a district that only focuses on testing. We look at it as a gauge of how we're doing as a, as a system. Um, but we're definitely not teaching to the test. If you go to our schools, you see more of what you see in those videos and you don't see skill and drill practicing from textbooks. There are places that do that. Uh, but I think that we will always be better off by not doing that. So, um, you'll see our kids doing high quality learning, um, activities. I think that that will ultimately make us more successful in tests, take care of themselves. But, um, you know, I just want to make sure that we articulate, um, and, and share that our beliefs and all the things that we do so well. Um, also we had a celebration of arts this past week. Um, and you, if you head onto the lobby, you can see some of the artworks on display, some incredible visual art, um, that students put together. Um, and we also had some performing arts. We had, uh, an elementary concert, um, that brought all three of our elementary schools together. Um, for a band concert and a choral concert and they were fantastic. Um, I think the highlight of the show for me was it did this, um, this great cover of, um, Owl City's, um, song Fireflies with flashlights. It was really cool. The visual effects were stunning and the dark art touring with the flashlights. Um, so, um, that was a delight both for, um, the audio and the visual of that performance. Um, our high school also had their concert this week and then middle school will have theirs next week. We had to move the middle school and high school concerts um, to, uh, not conflict with town, um, town meetings. We want to make sure that people weren't forced to choose between town meetings or going to the concert. So, um, thank you for your, um, bearing with us during that. Um, recently, uh, last week, actually I had a great opportunity to have breakfast with the bus drivers and also Pam Newton from All-Star Transportation. Um, and I think that the, the bus drivers are kind of unsung heroes in lots of school districts. And I think we sometimes forget about, um, how important they are. I think as ambassadors of our district, for a lot of our kids, that's the first face that they see each and every morning. And as an educator, as a parent, I can tell you that can make or break a kid's entire day, that interaction they have with a bus driver. And, um, we have just an amazing group of drivers that really care about the kids that go above and beyond, um, day in and day out. And, and sometimes I'm still almost, um, think it's too good to be true. I sent it to Nicole, um, on a few occasions because I've had so many historical, um, run-ins with trying to work through all kinds of snags on, on daily basis with, uh, transportation and we almost never had that. Um, so it's almost falls into the background and that's when people are really doing their job. Well, you almost don't see it, right? It almost becomes invisible to us. But, uh, Pam and, and Nicole do an amazing job, um, working through some of the small things. They never become big things, but, um, we don't have the disruptions that you have in other districts. You don't have to go far, pick up any paper, turn on any news broadcast and you'll see that, um, they don't have enough buses to bring the kids to and from school, uh, on some days. They have to cancel sporting events. They have to, you know, put off field trips. Um, we've had to do none of those things. So again, just to thank you to our unsung heroes across the district, our bus drivers who, um, are out there smiling and sending our kids off to a great day and bringing them public safety every day. Um, also, I'm really excited. This will be my first time through and, um, from what I understand, it's also the kind of a reboot, um, for senior projects and their presentations. So we're going to have a public, um, presentations of our senior projects. These are things that our students have been working on all year as uh, passion projects or as areas of intense focus, uh, or research. And they will be making their final presentations, uh, beginning on Friday, May twenty-sixth and that will run through June second. Um, I have sent out a schedule to the community with the projects that were, um, scheduled, uh, that may have to be updated. I'll just check back on that. And if there's an update, I'll send out the update. But we welcome the public to come in and join us. Um, we'll make sure that everyone signs in, um, and gets a visitor badge. We know that they're here, um, for the projects. But, um, the students and the faculty and staff here at Chapag are really, um, adamant about the fact that this really has to be a public display of learning. And, um, I'm excited that we're getting back to that in the, um, the post-COVID era. So I'm looking forward to that. And if you have time, um, you know, please stop by and check out some of these projects. Um, there's some really, really neat things in, in the, uh, in the queue and they're very diverse and different. So, um, lots of fun things to come in and explore. Um, I also did share with the community and I'll just share it again because it's such an amazing, um, achievement that, um, our three elementary schools all, um, were awarded, um, with a hundred percent participation in a governor's reading challenge. There were only three of six schools in the entire state, um, to earn this accolade. And so, um, to have half of the recipients come from our district is pretty astounding. So, um, that's a testament to the energy enthusiasm of our teachers and administrators and our families, um, to promote reading over the summer. Uh, research tells us that, that reading, um, is one of the very best ways to support, uh, students learning. And so, um, we're really excited that our, our elementary students put in so much time and effort, um, to read, um, when they don't have to, when they're outside of school. Um, and then finally I'll just wrap up with some upcoming events. This is a super exciting time of, of the year. Uh, and we have loads of events. Tonight was just kind of the, um, the appetizer for what's to come. Um, so we have middle school spring concert, as I alluded to earlier, that will be on Tuesday, May twenty-third at seven o'clock here at, um, Chapag. We have academic awards night, Wednesday night, May twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. The FFA banquet on Thursday night at six o'clock, that'll be here also. Um, Friday night, we have eighth grade graduation dance at seven o'clock. Um, then we have the junior senior prom, obviously the highlight of, um, students, um, experiences or one of the highlights of their experiences as a, as a high schooler. That'll be at Fairview Farm Golf Course in Harlington, um, and the time is to be determined. The scholarship night for our seniors will be Wednesday, May thirty-first at seven o'clock. We have a middle school play that will also be on June first at seven o'clock. The athletic award night, June second at seven. And finally, um, the culminating activity, high school graduation, which will be held here on campus um, on June tenth, it's a Saturday at ten o'clock AM. And our crew is busy trying to get the grounds ready and beautifying our campus so that, uh, we're ready to host the community and, uh, celebrate our, our seniors as they head off into, uh, whatever lies ahead of them in the future. So just a preview of some of the, uh, upcoming attractions as we close up the school year. And with that concludes my report.
I just want to highlight the notification of the field trip, playing server killer on June one, twenty twenty-three. That's big preschool in March and primary of the PPK and point of the year.
Yes.
So that's why this is on for, for those of you who are wondering why it came back, let's scale the space.
Right. And then, um, some of the other standard items we have is for personnel, we have, um, two new appointments. Um, Sarah Clement, uh, world language teacher at Chicago Valley School was very excited to come and, uh, and join us. Uh, I had a wonderful meeting with her this week. Uh, Danielle Livingston also joining us as a secretary here at Chicago. Um, and she's lovely and will do a great job. Um, we have two resignations to share. Uh, Carolyn Bensley, educational assistant at Washington Primary, as well as Jennifer Kramer, an educational assistant at Chicago Valley School, um, will be resigning. And, um, as Greg shared, um, just to share the notification that we will be sending a trip from Booth over to Old Sturridge Village, um, to check out colonial living in Sturridge, Mass.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the, um, the, uh, softball team, right? Cause they just won the champion, right? The championship. So I just want to throw a big shout out to the girls for, um, it's the first time, I think, in how many ever that they've written this? It's just amazing and they are just killing it. And I think that, um, I'm excited to see they're just really wrapping it up. So I think we just need to.
And it's a growing program, right? They had a huge number of girls come up.
So thank you for taking that back. Okay, um. Well, I guess we'll move on to, uh, the retreat. What, John, do we have?
Just a few words concerning the current budget, which is tracking extremely well and should end the year with a significant balance. As of April 30th, 12.5% remained with a budget balance of $3,104,051. Uh, following eight lines from the general ledger, general fund expenditures that are over budget. 117 clerical, $3,267 over. That is always, uh, consisted of monies that, um, that were spent training Don's, uh, the facility director's, uh, assistant. New assistant Connie retired. Um, line 118 custodial overtime pay, uh, $15,609. That seems to be a recurring theme throughout the years now. Line 122 computer tech salary, um, there was an increase there of $13,637. Line 443 copiers, technology rental and leases, um, $8,049. And Cole, uh, informed me tonight that, um, I guess we went to the pay per page, uh, system. So, I don't know what can be done there except words, uh, conservancy. Uh, 514 VOTEC transportation, uh, which was busing for eight students to and from Henry Abbott and Oliver Wilkert Tech School. That was only $541 over. Uh, there was 534, um, has to do with, um, voiceover internet phone service upgrade to the system, $1,485. And 622 electricity was, is now $13,691 over. So hopefully sometime in the near future, our solar farms will, uh, mitigate that expense and the worry about electrical charges escalating. Um, as well as line 627 fuel for the buses and vehicles. And everyone knows that the cost of fuel is, keeps, keeps skyrocketing, 20,000 over. Uh, these, these, uh, eight lines total almost $77,000 thus far. And Nicole, uh, will be transferring monies from the lines that are under budget to reconcile the deficits. That's about all.
Yeah, I assume, John, we have more that's under budget than we have.
Oh, definitely, definitely, definitely. Yeah, there's a lot under.
Okay, good. Committee reports, uh, curriculum and educational program adjustment.
Uh, nothing new to report. Our next meeting is June 12.
At Advance, Joe?
I attended the, uh, most recent meeting, which was May 4th, uh, in person. Uh, at Advance, uh, our board of directors approved a supplemental grant application for the Head Start prenatal to five program, as well as the two healthy foods certificates, um, which was the healthy food option and the combined food and beverage exemption. We also approved financing for both of the current construction projects in Torrington. Uh, the Grove Street property, uh, required a zoning waiver to construct a school on a property that there was already a school on. And the East School will now be renamed the Ed Advanced Regional Learning Center, uh, per request of the Torrington, the city of Torrington, because they didn't want the East School printed on the face of the, uh, building anymore. Uh, there was also an approval for new Hartford Public Schools to be added as an Ed Advanced member district. And we were also presented with the proposed agency budget, budget for 2023, 2024. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Financial operations, Alex.
Yes, uh, we met on May 15th, uh, the FNO committee. And, uh, really for the first time, i- it really struck home why we combined those two, uh, committees together. Cause it made a lot of sense. Uh, we talked mainly about, uh, facilities, uh, the swimming pool. Our swimming pool is about 15 years old, got some issues we're having to deal with. Uh, they're also, we're doing some paving and painting. Um, the solar project, just to keep you up to date, has been approved for the three elementary schools, but not for Chicago yet. Not that it's not going to be approved, but we don't know. For some reason they're, they're doing them in different order than we thought. So, uh, uh, we, we still have not heard about Chicago. And, uh, I think that is about it unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Julie, strategic long range plan.
Uh, yes, we met tonight right before the meeting. Everyone was in attendance. Greg joined us as a guest. And the administration really shared with us their drill down into the measures and actions of the long range plan. They had two meetings with Richard Lemons. So we kind of got down in the weeds on, on the actions and measures. We still have some work to go, but I think we're on track to get it finally completed within, will it be by the end of the school year, Mark? Do you think? Okay. All right. Excellent. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I was particularly impressed with the efforts that have gone into this, this particular part of the project. Uh, it's the ideas and the approaches and the methodologies to get, we need to go on this are, are really, really good. I think going to help us quite a bit. And it's, it does seem to be very curriculum focused. So this may be something that the committee is, is real bad because I know that, uh, that, uh, the committee's been very busy. And, uh, I mean, Justin, you've done a marvelous job, uh, leading it. And that's been, uh, it's been very helpful. And it's really helping us make that next thing. Stephanie, you've been big on that movement as well. And I think that that's been a real help, uh, for the district because you guys have, your committee has managed to, to really get a hand on, on, I think, curriculum here. We realize now how important that is to our success in the future going forward. That's a major part of it. So thank you. I want to thank you very much for, for doing that. Um, and, uh, and Julie, I want to thank you very much for your committee for what they've done on this long range plan. And it's all, it's all coming together now. And we're seeing how we can, how we can make these plans, how we can move forward with these plans and how we can, uh, um, really achieve what we're trying to achieve for this social thing. I mean, you, you saw some of it tonight. Uh, you continue to see it, the idea that, that we were three of the six schools that, you know, were taught about reading. Food and reading is just, it's a real testament. It just shows you the level of engagement, uh, the level of student achievement, the level of parent involvement, uh, and, and the phenomenal teachers that we have, uh, building leaders in this district. So it's just, uh, it's just a great thing. And so I guess again, it, it all looks like it's, it's starting to head in what I think is, is a tremendous direction, uh, for us. It's been going there for a while, but now we're starting to really pieces of what we want in the future. So thank you all for your hard work, uh, on your committees and for the whole board and their hard work. Okay, um, we're going to, um, we're going to move on to old business. Um, and on that we have, uh, I'll entertain the motions with proof policy number 3440 on inventories for a second reading. We discussed it last meeting and so it's on for second reading. Lou, by Joe, is it second?
My second.
We've been seconded. All those in favor, unless there's any discussion, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining. That's unanimous. That's approved for second reading. Which covers Jay, uh, the action on that. There's no new business or updates. Uh, so unless anyone has any other reason, we just did. Well, we adopted it for a second reading, but, uh, I guess we need to adopt the policy separately. Huh? Okay. Is, is there a motion to adopt policy number 3440 on inventories? Is there a second? We've been seconded. That's discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining. That is unanimously adopted. Unless there's any objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned at 8:35.